All right, I'm going to go ahead and call the August 16th City Council meeting to order. City Clerk, can you please go ahead and call the roll?
Mayor Protem, if I may please, like the report out of closed session and adjourn the special meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Great, thank you so much.
On the agenda, there is a closed session, item three, that's already been addressed earlier. So we'll have our city attorney report out on that.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. The City Council has returned from closed session with no reportable action taken.
Thank you. And then we're going to go, do I need to formally, it's been awhile, formally close the special meeting?
Yeah, if we could adjourn the special meeting and then open the regular meeting.
Okay, there you go. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the special meeting, and now we'll call to order the regular City Council meeting of August 16th. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Chirco, absent. Mayor Protem Hasselbrink?
Here.
Councilmember Bates?
Here.
Councilmember Dobie?
Here.
Councilmember Nefolda?
Here.
All right, can you rise with me? And Councilmember Nefolda will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Councilmember Dobie with the invocation.
Thank you. If you could face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Lord, I thank you for the opportunity to come before you and to invite you into this room. I thank you for the wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and discernment that we will need to make decisions that are best for our residents, for our constituents, for our city. I ask for favor and peace. I ask for peace this evening. I ask for us to begin to show love to one another with the sincerity that maybe we haven't seen in awhile. I ask that you would give us grace as we navigate different decisions that are new and sometimes foreign to us, but that we would always keep an attitude of love about us when we go to make these decisions. I thank you that none of us would operate from a perspective of greed or self-interest, but that we would function selflessly and for the betterment of us all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. May we see it? And we have one presentation tonight by Kathy Malaya, Director of Engineering for Orange County Sanitation District regarding the Los Alamos Trunk Sewer Project. You're up.
Thank you very much. This is actually my first in-person meeting since COVID started, so a year and a half. It's nice to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I was actually here in November and talking about this project. We were finishing up design, getting ready to bid out the job. We bid out the job, we have a contractor and ready to start, so I'm here to talk a little bit more about the impacts to the city and what you can expect. Just a slide on who we are. Orange County Sanitation District is a wastewater treatment and recycling agency. We serve 2.6 million people in north and central Orange County. We have 388 miles of regional sewer pipe. Part of that is the project I'm here to talk about tonight. And we have a 25-member board, 20 cities, four special districts, and one representative from the county. And something else I want to add about OC SAN is we make it a priority to know our assets and make sure we understand the condition of our infrastructure and take care of it. So we're happy, we have work here in Los Alamos to be able to contribute to the infrastructure. But what comes with infrastructure is disruption, and we understand that. So it's our goal that even though we have a project to do, that we make it as least disruptive as we can to the city. We started in design, reaching out to residents and the cities. And I want to thank Ron and Chris, my staff wants to thank them for their coordination. So this is the project, Los Alamos Trunk Sewer. There's two trunk sewer lines that will parallel. One starts on Lexington, goes down Cotella, and then down Los Alamos Boulevard. And the other one starts on Oak, down Cotella, and then they both go down Los Alamos. These pipes are roughly 45 to 60 years old, and they range in size from 30 to 39 inches. So why are we doing this project? Why are we here? I went into more detail when I was here in November, but the problem is we have older pipes, and they need to be rehabilitated, as well as some manholes. So the picture here is on the inside of a sewer. We send a camera down, and you can see the white part on there. That's calcium. Sewer pipe is usually 10-foot segments put together with joints. In this case, the joints are leaking, and when it leaks, it leaches calcium from the soil onto the pipeline. So there's two issues, water getting in, it does not allow sufficient capacity for the sewer, and then also when you have a calcium deposits like this, it also takes up room in the sewer, and it's hard for our maintenance folks to get in there and clean it. And then we have several manholes that are deteriorated, some need to be rehabilitated, and some need to be replaced totally. And so how we get that done, those calcium deposits, much like a Stalag type, we go in there and we water jet it. After that, we'll go through with the machine, and it checks all the joints, the ones that do need work, we'll get a chemical grout injection, and then the manholes, we go one by one and take those separately. So here's the work affecting Los Alamos. The same alignment that I showed you before, but on here you'll see the blue lines, that's where we're doing work inside a pipe. And all the colored dots, that's different work we're doing on manholes. So on the pipes itself, we do not have to dig up the street. We can open up the manholes, go manhole to manhole, and do our work. So with anything in blue, the pipe work, it will not be noisy, but it will cause some traffic impacts. The manholes will cause traffic impacts, and there will be some noise. We have to take out the pavement, jackhammer, open up those manholes. We just have a contractor on board, we only have their preliminary schedule. This is what their preliminary schedule says, it's not yet been finalized, but this is how they want to phase their project. Starting in Lexington in October, going down Cotella, and then down Los Alamos Boulevard, and finishing in February. During that time, there are restrictions on our work from Thanksgiving to New Year's Day, that we won't be allowed to work near the businesses. So we'll finish in February, the contractor will then come back in June, starting on Oak Street, Oak to Cotella, and then down Los Alamos, and finish in December. When we start out these projects, we do a lot of outreach. In fact, Daisy Coverubias is here, she's been leading this effort. And we reach out to cities, residents, neighbors, we do surveys to see what works best for them. Quite often, when you're a business, you say, "I would rather have you do the work during nighttime, because I don't want to disrupt my business." And if you're a resident, quite often you say, "Well, I'd rather have you do work during the day, because I don't want to hear you at night." So I'm going to put up all the hours. We spent a lot of time coordinating, and you can see everywhere, it's a little bit different. We try to show that some will be day and some will be night, depending on the needs of the community. Some areas, when school is in session, we don't start till 8:30. Along Cotella, it's all night work, except in front of a senior facility, which they asked us to be the day. And then towards the bottom, you see we're not going to start some work till after September, because it conflicts with the 405 project. So we take all the needs of the community and put it together. We have very detailed requirements on our contract, and that's our job, Daisy's job, to make sure that we stick to these. Another priority for us is community outreach. It starts during design, when we are putting together the work hours, and then we are very involved in the construction. Daisy will be leading the effort, along with her team. But we will have, this is official community liaison assigned to the project, we have a hotline that you can call 24/7. We do notifications and alerts. What you see on the screen is a snapshot of our program, online program, OC SAN Sewer Construction Project. Those are signs we put up everywhere, so if people want to see where to call.
Oh, wow.
And in fact, we have this postcard going out to all the residents. We start out with something in writing, and then ask that they transition over to electronic media. So you will see this soon, I believe it's also going in the packet for the council members. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments up here? Go ahead, Ron.
A question, if I may, Kathy. So when you've looked at this project, I'm assuming you've looked at or you're considering trying to line some of these pipes, rather than, as you say, you're not technically replacing them. So I'm sorry I wasn't here many months ago, when you made your first presentation, but I assume that for some of the repair, you can line this, and I'm wondering if there's any technology that's now where these manholes can be prefabricated, where in essence you go in there, pull out the old one, which is going to take some destruction, but then just drop in the new one and move on?
Yes, that's what we do. So on the pipelines, the pipes themselves are in good shape, it's just the joints, and we won't have to dig up the street for that. And for the manholes, we'll have to dig it up, take out the old one, but then you can buy prefab and put it in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick question on Lexington, is that work stopping at the base? It's not going on to the base property?
I couldn't hear the first part of your question.
The work that's going on Lexington, is that stopping at the base? It's not going on to base property?
I'm going to turn to Daisy. Do you know?
It does not go on the base property.
Okay, all right.
And it's right out of the Orangewood Church, but that's...
Oh, right, okay. Right.
It does not go to the base, but we are working with the base, according to delivery and things of that nature.
Okay. And then, can we also work with General Leeny, just because maybe during this time, because I know they've got not just drill weekends, but I know this morning you could tell there was something going on, and maybe have them open up the Orangewood Gate for their soldiers?
Of course.
Thank you. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, at this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. And I've got some blue cards up here, so I'll start with those, and then open it up to anybody else that would like to speak. So Barbara, you're first up.
It's good to see you.
You too.
Honorable Councilmembers, my name is Barbara Farrell, and I live, worship, shop, volunteer in Los Alamos. First of all, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission and all of the people that helped me to put through the permit, was a little bit, I needed a little help, and they gave me everything I needed. Over the years, Community Congregational United Church of Christ has served the poor and the food insecure in Los Alamos. When the pandemics struck us, we began to store pantry boxes in our closed fellowship hall. Exactly one year ago today, we partnered with, well, maybe not exactly today, but one year ago, with Transitions in Motherhood, to store and distribute pantry food, baby food, formula, and diapers, to serve new and expecting mothers with young children. We continue to serve Klein Manor, that has gone on for years and years. And Klein Manor provides low-income housing to seniors. We are planning opening fellowship hall to serve the recovery community again, which we were almost every night of the week doing that. The city has approved a temporary use permit for a container to store clothing, pantry items, baby things, and everything that we need to support the good work for the people of Los Alamos. I'm asking you to waive the $926 fee, because we are still raising funds for the placement of the container, which cost us a lot more than we thought. And this payment has created hardship in my fundraising. And I really appreciate your help with serving the people of Los Alamos. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Next up is Stephanie Roberts.
My name is Stephanie Roberts, and I am the Missions and Outreach Director at CCUCC. Over the past several years, my commission members and I have worked very hard to build a program to help those experiencing homelessness, low-income families, and those who are food insecure in our community. We have partnered with Housing as a Human Right OC and the People's Homeless Task Force in order to bring non-perishable foods, toiletry items, and clothing into our space to hand out to those who need them. As the pandemic shut down the community, we were met with the needs of young families who were struggling to survive. We were able to expand our outreach to those families by providing non-perishable foods, formula, diapers, children's clothing, and toys. Thus, our collaboration with Transitions in Motherhood was born. With the shutdown of our facilities, we turned our fellowship hall into a pantry. Our classrooms were converted into storage space for children's clothing, diapers, and toys. Hundreds of individuals and families have been provided items they needed to weather the pandemic. As things started opening up, we recognized the need for an adjustment. The preschool on our property was being ready for students, forcing us to move all items stored in our classrooms into our fellowship hall. However, we will soon need to open our fellowship hall for normal uses, as we don't want to abandon the programs that we have implemented in the last few years. We were forced to make an alternative plan and opted to purchase a 40-foot storage container and place it onsite to store the items currently stored in the fellowship hall. This is a project that has taken six months of effort, and for a small community church, a great deal of money to come to fruition. Barbara Farrell spent hours of time on the phone, writing emails and filling out forms to make this happen. Imagine when we found that we would have a fee, a permit fee, of 920-some dollars also. All our efforts have been paid for by the generosity of small donors and a loan for the permit fee, which needs to be repaid. We have provided clothing, diapers, and toys that have been donated to us. Food items, diapers, and formula have been purchased at the, excuse me, at the food bank. This is not a money-making operation, rather it is the result of much charitable giving and having great volunteers and collaborations to make it happen. If we were profiting from the use of this container and weighs material, I would completely understand the permit fee, but for a charitable organization providing a free service to the community, it seems exorbitant and a little unfair. I ask that you waive the permit fee and refund the money that was paid to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And next up is Tara Faragian.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. So just to somewhat reiterate what was spoken, I am one of the co-founders of Transitions in Motherhood, and with the generosity of the CCUCC Church and the Mission Outreach, we've been able to partner, and we will celebrate our one-year anniversary of the free drive-through experience, that is, every third Saturday. And that is anyone within the surrounding area can come and drive through and receive a box of food. They'll tell us what size clothing they need for their family, from newborn to adult, diaper, what size, wipes. And all of this has been through the passion of service through our local community. There's everyone that is involved. We didn't even have a bank account, that's how small we were. But when we heard, when we knew the needs of the community and the pandemic, how it touched families, my background is mental health, and that's really what the nonprofit was created for. However, we know the strain of finances on young families does contribute to the mental health and well-being of those, just trying to survive during difficult times, which was going on before the pandemic, but obviously exacerbated. We have, every piece of clothing is donated from our local community, and we filled the entire Mayflower preschool, four classrooms full of donations. And this is just people, we maybe advertised maybe three times, and people just said, "Can you take more? Can you take more?" And we just had people that said they wanted to volunteer, and just gave, I mean, I have people in our local community giving three to four nights of their week just to sort clothes to get ready for our Saturday event. Diapers, people just buying diapers and dropping them off, no questions asked. It's just amazing, I just have so much gratitude for our community and how much has been given, and no expense has been incurred by anyone who's served, given, it's just out of the desire to help others. And so I would like to ask for that $926 to be waived, and hopefully that we just continue to serve our community and know that through the gratitude of our very generous community that there's no cost. And so I'd hope that you would consider, and I thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Rest of you are all shy out there? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close our communications and bring it back to Council comments. I'm going to start with Ms. Dobie.
Go for it.
This is where I tell y'all what I've been up to?
Mm-hmm.
I made a list. Well, first, I would like to thank y'all that spoke. Thank you for sharing. I was listening. So here's what I've been up to. Anyone interested in LASIK, I got my eyes done at SoCal Eye in the Los Alamos Medical Center back in May, and I got my follow-up done. I'm 2015 in one eye, 2020 in the other. Highly recommend them, it was, highly recommend them. It was, I think the first time I was quoted, it was $7,500. My bill was $3,750. Happy Mother's Day to me. I went to one of my HR committee meetings, I went to the ribbon cutting for Roadrunner Spirits and Wine. It's in the Center Plaza, up by Brew Kitchen Ale House. A couple of brothers, outstanding individuals, it was such a good time, and they have a little bit of everything. They have non-alcoholic, they've got all the wines, and you can even put in a special request, because I did ask about something specific, and they deliver. And then here are some more of my adventures and my treasure finds in Los Alamos. I told you I was going to start doing this. So first up is UniNow, which is in the Madera's parking lot. My son and my nephew love them. So gentlemen and ladies, head on over to UniNow, they will take exceptional care of you. California Cocina, they have amazing service, their portion sizes were outstanding, and their flan, I did not share with anyone. And then I don't know if anyone else has never been to volcanoes, but I had never been to volcanoes, and I feel robbed, I feel like I was stolen from. My husband should have told me, and he didn't, because he's from here, and it's probably because their bacon cheeseburgers will blow your whole mind. And Printmasters, they have the quickest, most friendly, and reliable service, and they're always so happy when you go in there. London Local Business, and then CVS. This is a plug for the parents that need the wallet-sized photos for softball, basketball, football, baseball, whatever. Download it from your phone with the CVS app, send it right over to them, tell them wallet size, it's a dollar, and you will have your wallet-sized photo for whatever the little packets are. Right here our corner, CVS. Go Los Al! I'm done.
Jordan, you want to go ahead and follow up with that?
Not really.
Come on.
Well, I'm on the other end of the spectrum here. Guess I just don't do anything. Now, I've spent, I have young kids, and it's summertime, so we've spent a lot of time doing some camping over the last month. So other than using the dog park for the last end of that month, which was really great, I wish we had it more, you know? I wish the term, the temporary became permanent. Other than that, I have nothing to report, so.
All right. Well, that was nice and boring. Ron, you're up.
Just two quick things. One, I joined Tonya at the Roadrunner dedication and ribbon cutting, and let me tell you, she does a great job of welcoming businesses to the city. Thumbs up, Tonya, thank you. And I enjoyed the function, they have a great selection of wine, beer, it's a nice little community area, as she said, over in the center off of Los Alamos Boulevard. Secondly, this is something I've been working on for quite awhile, and I just want to share with you, because we as a council are going to have to get involved in this. As some of you, and this has to do with the REVEN Tax Committee of the League of California Cities, and ultimately state legislation. As you may know, a lot of the sales tax is distributed primarily by point-of-sale, and some of these large distribution operations are getting a lot of credit for sales, and certainly they should get some credit, and maybe a little bit on their side, but let's face it, these distribution companies use our streets and run their trucks over our streets that take a hit, too. And right now, for most of that, we're cut out of the formula. So what the league is trying to do, and they're going to need our position on this in support, is come up with a program that's more acceptable to all the cities in the state whereby the actual impact that the delivery businesses have on the community is recognized based on the sales tax return, the 1%. So anyhow, I just want to put everybody on, in information that that's coming, and we're probably going to need to get involved in that as a city. I know the city manager's on top of that issue. That's all.
That's it, okay. And finally, with me, just a quick update from Orange County Fire Authority. Due to some of the needs that are needed to get the runways up to speed over at the base, we have temporarily relocated our fire risk planes and our supertanker over to Chino Airport. One of the main reasons is the runway lights are not working, and part of the abilities that these resources have is they fly at night. And if there are no runway lights, you can't land or take off. So we're very close contact with General Baldwin, he's aware of this, the sense of urgency and everything, so hopefully that'll get rectified very soon, and off we go. Wanted to remind everybody about the Film and Food Fest series that continues Friday night, August 20th, this coming Friday night, over at the Los Al baseball fields. Remember, The Titans is a movie, it's football season, so we shall be there and watch that good old football game. Los Al youth baseball fall ball signups are starting, ages 3-12. It's a 10-week season that starts the weekend after Labor Day. It's a great instructional season for these little kids to get involved and start swinging the bat and catching the ball. August 25th at 6 o'clock in council chambers is the housing plan for the Los Al Arena. This is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, it's another state mandate that has basically gone to every city in the state and said, "We need to build first 300 so low-income housing homes." And they don't care where we find the land, you just go ahead and do it. So we're trying to be as transparent as possible and communicate to everybody, so when they start hearing "Arena" passed around, they'll have a little bit of idea what it's about. So we're going to be having like a town hall meeting here Wednesday, August 25th at 6 o'clock. So if you're interested in just kind of being informed, this is a great thing to do it. This coming Saturday, Casa Youth Shelter is doing their annual poker night at 5 o'clock. We serve a spot, contact Casa Youth Shelter. We finally get these nonprofits, are finally being able to get the ability to start fundraising again, and we enjoy that, because those are always fun nights. And finally, I just want to thank the Community Congregational Church for coming up and doing the ask. A lot of people won't do the ask. I'm a firm believer that the local church is the hope of the world, and anybody that's willing to distribute to the needy with no strings attached, it should be a good discussion in a bit, so I look forward to it. But thank you for coming up and having the courage to come and at least ask, that means a lot. So, and with that, it's, we're going to go ahead back to items from the city manager.
Well, luckily you covered just about my entire list, but I would like to ask our Recreation and Community Services Director to provide an update on some of the other events that are going to be happening here pretty soon in the city.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. I would like to invite the community to celebrate Los Alamos for our Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital, Long Beach, Week of Los Al presented by Southland Credit Union. It's coming up about four weeks. I have hot off the press, our Fall Recreation brochure that's going to be mailed out this week, and it's got detailed information in the first pages, two to five. It's got a little roadmap of what's going to be entailed. This is also in our social media, and then a little article on what all the activities are, and then all of the... are, and then all of the ads with all of the information. As you can tell, I'd probably be here all night trying to explain everything, but just some of the highlights. We have Serve Los Al, Citywide Volunteer Service Event, on September 10th and 11th, that kicks off the week. And then we have our Family Day, our Health and Pet Expo, we've got Dumpster Day, we've got social media activities, we've got free art workshops for the community, Bikes and Bites, Los Alamitos Restaurant Tour, the My City, My Los Al Street Fair, which is a brand-new event, and of course, Race Los Al. We're celebrating our 40th anniversary, and we're returning back to the streets of Los Alamitos. So we've got plenty for the entire community to come out and do the week of September 10th through the 18th. So we'd like to call your attention to our social media, to our website. You can find it, just Google "Week of Los Al," or go to our city's website, cityoflosalamitos.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my comments. It's got to say that this will be the second running of the annual City Attorney/City Manager 5K. The city attorney did squeak out a victory last year, so I will be hard training for the next couple of weeks.
Squeak out a victory? I heard it was kind of a no-brainer. Sorry. So, well, thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to warrants. Are there any questions or comments?
If I may?
Sure.
Mayor Protem, on page, let me make sure, three, there's the rather large expenditure there under Public Risk Innovation Solutions. I'm wondering if the Finance Director can share that expenditure with us, and maybe a little bit on how it compares to last year?
Yes, thank you. In connection with that question on page three, it's for $152,676 to Public Risk Innovation Solutions, also known as PRISM. And that's in connection with the annual premium for the workers' compensation insurance. And it, comparison to last year, it's just represents a small increase. Last year fiscal, last year 2021 was $151,129. So it's just about the same as it was on previous fiscal year.
Got it. Sure, absolutely.
On page, take that same explanation, Craig, on, on page 12 there, with the self-insurance fund, the $160,000, and how, how, how does that compare with last year?
That one is actually a significant increase to the previous year. Fiscal 2021 was about $129,000. The reason for the increase is really due to loss that California has experienced from the fires, and then other catastrophic losses are built into this as well. So we're all sharing in this liability that increases our insurance premiums.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All right. And roll call vote.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dobie, seconded by Councilmember Nefolda. Roll call. Mayor Turco absent. Mayor Protem Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Nefolda?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good? Okay, next, we're going to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Surprisingly, I got some.
Oh, no.
Eleven F, and I've never done this before, so y'all be patient with me, okay? Eleven F, eleven H, and 12B.
That's the discussion, that's next time. We're just doing consent right now. So you've pulled?
F and H, eleven F and H.
Ron, did you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to pull, well, we, we, I'd like to pull C and E. Please.
Jordan, you want to hop on this bandwagon?
Say again?
You want to hop in this bandwagon and pull D or something?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, you're good. All right, can I go ahead and have a motion for the balance?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll start in alphabetical order and start with C. Councilmember Bates?
Yes, maybe we could get the city manager to discuss this from a potential revenue point of view for the, for the city.
Thank you, sir, actually. And so, like many cities, Los Alamitos has contracted the supplying and cleaning and operation of bus shelters for many years. One component that has been missing from Los Alamitos' contracts has been the potential to actually generate revenue going forward. I have to credit our new Development Services Director, Ron Noda, for noticing this, I'll call it a shortcoming, and placing that as part of the RFP going forward. And what it does is it allows us to actually look for ways to actually generate revenue off of these sites when we are not using them for city notifications, public service announcements, and so forth. By actually going and recommending more bus shelters, we obviously have more places where we can actually look to generate revenue off of. Now, there is no good answer as to how much revenue can be generated, simply because of the fact that, as you heard from Emmeline, we have a number of events that we run constantly throughout the city, and we do use this as a way to make sure that we're actually providing that information to our residents. However, I believe, Mr. Noda, you have some ideas about what revenue looks like in other cities?
Correct. So our neighboring city, Seal Beach, annually brings in approximately $40,000.
And so with that, we'll also look for different places where maybe some of these sites actually generate more revenue than others, given their location, given the amount of cars that drive past them. And so obviously, we'll look to maximize that revenue. And once we get into the RFQ phase, and we actually select a vendor, we will go through and negotiate as to what exactly that percentage looks like.
Okay.
I'll move to recommended action.
Okay. You know what? Let's go ahead, because it sounds like there's just a lot of questions, so let's go ahead and go through these, and then we can do it. That would be great. So we're gonna go with E, and Ron, you're up again.
Okay. On, on E, basically there, I'm trying to verify a couple things, but one, let's make sure that what we're suggesting is that this agreement would extend this, this amendment would go from August of '21 to August of '22. And then I guess my follow-up question would be, are we gonna be able to make the expenditure of the $160,000 in that timeframe?
Yes, sir. And if I, if I can provide just a, a quick, a little bit of background, when we, we have gone through and done a lot of different planning efforts here in the city in the last 18 months, a number of different projects that have gotten in front of each other or behind each other, depending upon their complexity. Staff has done a great job at looking at some of these projects and saying, we need to reorder the way that we're actually going about them, in order to make sure that we have some of the baseline data that is needed from one project in order to complete the next project. And so, I'm happy to say that this project is still on schedule. We still will be able to complete it during the fall, which is exactly where we planned to have it completed before, and we will be able to make the expenditure. While I believe that we will be done with this project before we enter the new year, I do still recommend that there be a full year on the term. Just in the off case, there are things that we might want to add, and obviously, we all know that we're dealing with additional state mandates, and so we want to make sure that we're able to take those into account if needed.
All right, you're good with that?
I'm good.
All right, so now we're gonna go to F, and that would be Tonya on the street sweeping.
Okay, just quick questions for, can we do alternating for each area? Like Dutch Haven and Carrier Row says a side of the street on Tuesday, they're going to do both sides at the same time. That's just a personal peeve of my own, so I can only imagine how many other people it frustrates. So is that something that can be looked at, where they do alternate sides so that people that might be at home or working from home can park somewhere if they don't have a regular garage to park in?
And I'll ask, again, our Development Services Director to hop in, but again, this is an RFP process, and so we have the ability to ask the respondents for just about anything that we want at this point. So a rescheduling of how different streets might be swept, I think is a possibility. We will have to take into account signage that's throughout the city, then how exactly that might have to be changed in order to make sure that we're able to meet those schedules. But again, let me ask, let me have Mr. Noda address that.
Evening, yes. So our street sweeping schedule is tied into our city's municipal code, so for us to alter the street sweeping schedule, we have to go and alter our municipal code. So to basically answer your question, yes, we can change the schedule, but we have to go through a process, including what the city manager, Chet Simmon, said is alternate, you know, new signage, et cetera. But yes, we can, but again, we have to go through a process.
How do I start that process? Can I start that process? Or I have to wait for somebody else to do that?
Think I'm gonna...
This is definitely the time to be talking about these issues, so why don't we do this? Is that, if, if the council does intend to approve this item, we can talk about different elements that we want to make sure are included within the RFP that's going forward, and if this is a desire of the council, we obviously can include that.
May, may I just comment on that?
Sure, absolutely.
I guess the only challenge with that, and, and maybe a little survey in the neighborhood would work, but a lot of the different residential areas, I know, like to have it posted so that both sides of the street are done at the same time, so they know that's no parking on that particular day, rather than having to remember, okay, it's this side of the street one day and this side of the street the other day. So maybe if we ask the neighbors what they like, that might be helpful in trying to make that decision, because I think this came about as a result of having done that many years ago, but things changed.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm just more interested, because most people are working from home now.
Yeah.
So they can see the sign, and they can hear the sweeper, and I would prefer to have somewhere to park if I am at home than having to go and park on another block one day out of a week or whatever it is. So yeah, can we do a survey then? Because that's, that's great.
I think it's a little different in Apartment Road, just because most people don't have their driveways where they can kind of shimmy things around, so definitely a survey would make sense.
Well, they alternate ours.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm speaking for the masses now, see?
Gotcha.
I care about everybody's district, not just mine.
Who's sharing?
And I got a garage, so I'm really not worried about it. I'm for the people, though.
Are you, are you good with F?
I'm good with F.
All right, so now we're gonna go down to H. Councilmember Dobie, the guardrail improvements.
Is that what that is? H is guardrail?
Guardrails. Did you not mention that?
Well, that's red light camera.
I think two, I think G is also marked H.
Oh.
So there was two Hs, I believe.
Oh, I'm interested in the red light camera enforcement program.
Okay, so that's item number G.
Oh. My God, beagle.
All right. Go for it.
So I just have, looks like three questions. I read that there was no increase for this, this contract we're entering. Is that because we weren't really using the red light services, because we didn't have this, I thought I recalled someone saying we really didn't have the staff to monitor the information that we were given?
Councilmember Dobie, the, Redflex themselves has made a determination not to increase the contract, and we, the staff that we have was, was a result of COVID, obviously, and not having people available to do that, but that, I think they may have taken that into consideration, but they made a decision to, to not increase the cost, and where some, it's, and I won't speak for Redflex, but a lot of times it's tied to the CPI and their actual costs incurred for that contract.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then, do we know how long that the lights stay green at each intersection and going both ways? And I ask that, because I, I called Ron earlier, and it wasn't one of our camera lights, but I was literally at a light where after two and a half cars, it hit red. So I was watching cars run it, and it was, first day of school back, I'm not gonna snitch, okay? But I know that they were trying to get to that middle school drop-off. So is there, who sets the timing, or is, is there, how does that part work for these?
Yeah, and I would probably defer to Ron Noda on that, but...
So all the lights in the city are on a light synchronization system, and so we have the ability to set the, again, synchronizing it. So our traffic engineer from Willden would take a look at that, and then, you know, in his opinion, would set the traffic, the synchronization of the lights.
Okay. All right.
Just as an address to that as well, I, I will say this, that we can also review our, our current timing on all of these lights in order to ensure that they are actually meeting a standard. So that is something that I will ask our Development Services Director to check into with our traffic engineer.
May I add to that? If we may, it would just seem that once school is back in full operation, that that be a good time to check, especially around the schools and how that's operating?
Agree completely, sir.
All right, I think that handles everything for the consent calendar, so can I have a motion? Oh.
If I could interject, I apologize. So, so we've had one motion already to approve what we believed was the balance of the consent counter, but there's a little bit of confusion regarding item G, which we technically approved, but then discussed. I, I think the best way to clean that up now would just be make a motion to approve the entire consent counter as a whole, and that supersede the prior vote.
Perfect. Keep us honest. All right. Second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty then. So now we move on to discussion items. So the first one is the lease of 12 automated license plate reader cameras for a one-year pilot program. And Chief, I think you're up.
I would be, but I'm gonna do what a chief does really well, and I'm gonna delegate this to Captain Wayne Byerly to present the staff report.
Oh, he's snapping a suit, too. All right.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. Thanks for this opportunity to, to open up some discussion, reference automated license plate readers in the city. One of the things we do is, you know, we collect data on crime, and we, we manage that data, and we look at it to, you know, make different deployments. But when it comes to investigating crime and responding, we have to look for ways to, to work smarter, not harder. And technology is out there to, to help us do that. So we looked at automated license plate readers, and I think, I think this is a very effective and applicable solution to bolster our efforts at public safety. You know, and aside from, you know, aside from criminal investigations and, you know, catching, you know, being identified or being notified about stolen vehicles in the city, we also get notifications, reference Amber Alerts, missing persons, so there are other applications as well. Being home to a pretty prevalent military base, I think this program would also bolster our efforts to help keep that place safe. Potentially, there could be a suspicious vehicle that was identified, and it could be entered into the system, and if it was in the area, we would be notified real time. So this is, this is pretty effective. When I started looking into this, I, I pulled our policy out, and I, I noticed that we had automated license plate reader policy in place, and, and I thought, wait a minute, we don't have license plate readers. So I did some research into it, and about 12 years ago, the PD in the community, we had license plate readers. They were mobile, they were affixed to the police cars, and as the officers would drive around, it would collect that data, and it would go into the system. And obviously, being 12 years old, that, that technology is just incredibly old and antiquated. I don't know what happened to that system. I can say that we don't, we don't utilize those anymore. The, the plate readers that we're looking at, they're, they're static displayed, they're, they're positioned at intersections, and I want to kind of cover some, you know, people have a little bit of, you know, that Big Brother concept when it comes to plate readers, and a couple things that, that this is not, okay? This is not facial recognition technology, this is not a red light camera system capturing violations, it is not a sneak peek into the, the contents inside someone's car. The Flock Plate Reader, it uses their proprietary technology, and it captures vehicle information from the rear as it passes by the reader. So we get information about the license plate, the, the vehicle color, the make, the model, and that data is captured and put into a database, and, and it, it lives there for, let's say, 30 days. Well, it does live there for 30 days unless we extract it, okay? So there's a couple avenues that, that would help us. If a vehicle is reported stolen, it's entered into the system by the agency where it was stolen at. If our plate reader, if it drove down the street and it was captured by our plate reader, our officers would get real-time notification, either via their department-issued cellphones or from dispatch, that, hey, there's a stolen vehicle, and it just crossed through this reader. So I spoke to, to the chief over at Lake Forest Police Services, and, and he told me a lot of stories, a lot of information about real cases that, that played... stories, a lot of information about real cases that played out that way. And I'll add that it's not just a stolen vehicle, that most of those cases where officers were notified and responded and stopped the vehicle, it parlayed into other crimes, guns, drugs, identity theft. So it was able to, it was able to, you know, capture and provide leads to other criminal So another way, too, is that our detectives, if they're working a case and there's no leads, they would utilize vehicle information, and then they would access Flock Safety, and then they would mine that data, and they would be able to provide our pull-up information about a vehicle that was in the area. And other agencies are using Flock Safety, so we can interface with other agencies to help identify vehicles that were associated with other crimes. And the local agencies that are using Flock Safety, I reached out to Fullerton, Still Beach, Huntington Beach, and they're all reporting just great success with this program. In fact, they all said that they started out as a pilot program with just a limited number of cameras, and they're all proposing to add more cameras to increase that coverage. It is, I see this as really, it's a force multiplier, you know, for a small but mighty agency as ours. I think this is a good thing, and it aligns with our commitment to public safety. And that said, if you have any questions?
Bring it back here, Ron?
Please. Captain, of these 12, how many do you have at this point designated for cars, and how many of them would be stationary?
All 12 would be stationary. The Flock program, it's only stationary cameras.
Uh huh.
So they'll mount, you know, to an existing pole. We've identified a handful of intersections preliminarily that we're going to look at, because each camera captures two lanes of traffic. So if we have, you know, three lanes down a roadway that we need to capture data from, we'd have to use two cameras.
I guess my question on this focuses more on the necessity for, like, 12 cameras on a pilot program. I guess, you know, I support the program. In fact, as a former city manager, I helped initiate this program in La Harper Heights back many years ago. So I know the value, I'm not arguing that. I guess I'm arguing more with the commitment upfront until we've really tested it and make sure all those locations, some of which may not be high-flow and are likely, not likely roadways for criminals to use to access the city, that we may not need all those cameras. So I guess in supporting this, my idea would be to support it at a lower level initially, see where those cameras really are useful, and not put them. For example, in La Harper Heights, we had them at each end of the major intersection, in each end of the major streets coming and going from La Harper Heights, but not on East West Road, which was the diagonal through the city, because we found that most of the criminality or the people who were committing the crimes in the city were accessing through hacienda. So kind of that's my point on this, in terms of whether or not we need to jump in, it seems like almost full bore, with 12 cameras right up front.
Great point, and I actually looked at it from that perspective. And with the pilot project, it's for a year. And the goal is, is that to report back after that year and say, hey, this works or it doesn't. And I looked at that number as sufficient to get all the data, so I can come back and report and give a thorough report and say, yeah, not enough, we don't need it, or it works with 12, or even, hey, we need some more. So I looked at the number 12 as that sufficient to give us a quality pilot program.
And you're also saying, then, it could also be less?
Councilmember Bates, if I could interject, part of the research on doing this was, we did look at all the ingresses and egresses of the city, and there are a number, even though we're a four-square-mile city.
Right.
But a lot of the, as Captain Byerly had stated, they'll cover up the two lanes, and we have six lanes of roadway on Catala, right? And we have 14 million cars going through this intersection alone. And so when you have that kind of traffic and that many cars, and the different places that we want to try to capture those people coming west into the city, as well as east and north and south, it was, actually, we kind of looked at it, and we started off with a much bigger number, and to try to get a better sense of, you know, of coverage. And I, both of us discussed it, and we said, you know, we can at least get a smaller sample and really get all the traffic on those lanes covered properly at the various exits and entrances to the city. So I think you could go less, but then you would be, we would be not really reporting as accurately as we could, and there would be people that would actually be able to get through, because it's still not a tightly, you know, knit or mesh kind of a net that we're throwing out there. There's still a lot of gaps that are open, but we're hoping with the heaviest traffic that comes in and out at those locations, and where the residential, the entry of the residential areas where we're concerned about, you know, the burglaries of vehicles, you know, we've had a lot, I mean, the increase in property crimes is what we're, we don't have a lot of violent crimes, thank goodness, but we do have, you know, catalytic converters stolen, and things that we really don't know when they come, you know, when they happen, because they happen in the middle of night, people aren't, we don't have a lot of witness stuff or testimony. So what we do is, we, these cameras have proven, and we've asked this, and I know that he did reach out to the Sheriff's Department to find out about their program and Lake Forest specifically, and what they were saying is that the ability to capture vehicles driving into these neighborhoods, or driving into your city, and then eventually going to neighborhoods and giving that to detectives sometime later, we may not capture them right at that moment, but we have an investigative lead to actually work on, and then go find where these folks are at, and then run that plate that we got around every other Flock system out there. And that gives us the ability to find out if they've been in other areas doing the same thing, and then we can actually tie a bunch of crimes together where we didn't have that capability before. So I think 12 is a good number. It's, I don't think it's so robust that it's, you know, that it's, we're committing too many, too much of our resources, but it's not too small of a number, where we're really not getting a fair sample.
Chief, I guess my question is a follow-up to that, is are we also looking at having a few of our cars with plate readers on the cars, so that when we go through the areas where we know we're losing a lot of catalytic converters and a lot of break-ins, that those cars would be able to read those license plates of people coming into that area and know if there's problems? I guess that would be my question. It seems like it should be a more robust approach to this, even though, again, I'm going to go with you that we need these 12 cameras, because they can only cover two lanes at a time.
Yeah, I would love to have, you know, vehicle-mounted automated license plate readers, at least on one or two of the vehicles at some point. This was just a, you know, was a program that was presented, that we saw the kind of successes from the neighboring agencies that we thought we could capitalize on, and it is a, you know, a force multiplier. We don't have enough cars really in our city to drive around to capture everything, right? But we do have 12 areas that will be able to monitor the traffic that's coming and going, and it really will lead, I believe, to some great investigative leads, where we'll be able to follow up and bring some resolution to the citizens that become victimized from guys coming into our city and burglarizing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And I did want to mention, Councilmember, just because I think it's a good lead-in for your question. The chief and I have been talking about different systems that we can layer upon each other. So one system by itself is fantastic, but then you start adding a mobile component to it, it becomes even more fruitful to their efforts. We start talking about adding, accessing the neighborhoods and different owners' ring doorbells. We start accessing different cameras that people might have on the outside of their houses. We can layer all of these things on top of each other, and then the system becomes more and more robust as time goes on. So I, the chief and I see this, I think, as a first step to get ourselves in the game.
Thank you.
No, and I agree on the, for a cost of $2,700 a camera, to be able to give our police officers another resource, I know there's a huge uptick in Apartment Road, just because of the density and everything, and I can get from Cypress over to Little Cottonwood Park and never hit a major intersection. So it would be nice to have a camera on Lexington and Farquhar, or over on Howard and Noel, to be able to preventatively catch these. In our recent crime summaries, we're showing that most of the crime, the big crime that is committed from people coming outside of the city, stolen cars, and if we would have had that resource, we would have already been notified of it and not relying solely on the boots on the ground. So I like this idea, I hope it's wildly successful, and we can come back and just improve our technologies for public safety. So, do I have a motion for a recommendation?
I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right, I ain't going to let you. I just have a few questions, and whoever can answer it best is cool with me. I hear a lot of pros, what are some of the cons? Why isn't it in other major cities, like, or if it is, and they just weren't mentioned?
There are a number of cities that have ALPR, that we were just talking about, the ones that are around us locally. And there are even retirement facilities or neighborhoods that have the same system because they're protecting, there's a lot of auto theft and burglaries and those. I think the cons, if you have anything, and we saw this coming this past year, was there was a concern that legislation was going to not allow you to have that data, you know, it was even less than a month, and you were going to have to delete it right away, and because there was a fear that some, for some reason, they believed that we were going to be using this information for something else. And when we, and this is something that Cal Chiefs actually did, when we spoke with the legislators about, that were for this bill, telling them, you know, this is all for investigative leads. It does help for things on, as if somebody, as Captain Byerly said, was to drive through your community, and he gives a red flag that, hey, there's a stolen vehicle, then we can go track it, trade, you know, and find out where it's at. That's true. But a lot of this stuff is used for after the crime occurs, we have no leads, but we go and search these records, and we find these vehicles in the area, you know? So we've fought really hard to say that if you had less than 30 days, it wouldn't make, you really don't get, some of these bigger agencies, they wouldn't even get to that report for about two weeks, right? So that would be the con, was that legislation could change it so that it becomes ineffective. And that's essentially the argument we made. So the bill was killed, and we weren't faced with that kind of restriction that could have been. And partially because a lot of these agencies throughout the state of California said, hey, listen, if you do that to our program, there's no reason why we probably should have it then, you know? And the reality is that, you know, it drops off anyways unless the agency pulls that specific camera for that date and time, and then you keep, and then you can maintain that for the term of the investigation. But I would say that's probably the one con, you know, that you have to worry about, is the change of that. But I think in terms, it's one of those things where it really truly is a force multiplier for public safety, and it has a lot of positives to it, and really no drawbacks that I can really think of, you know?
Okay, well, my next question, I think I just have two more. My next one is kind of tethered to that one. It talks about the admin for will be the support services captain. Is there some sort of training or protocol or something where they, number one, will, like, how does the information stay current? Is it someone has to go in there and delete when a license plate should be dropped off? Or what are the qualifiers for keeping a license plate? Can you just keep one because somebody thought that they saw, or maybe the plate was a little blurry, so we're going to hold on to it? How clear is the...
Well, I'm going to let the admin...
Oh, the admin in the room, okay.
...person answer that question, because he'll be in charge of it.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll be the administrator for the program. And basically, all the data that's captured, it lives in the cloud. And after 30 days, all that data is, it's dumped, it's gone. There's a couple ways that that data gets memorialized, is if we're doing an investigation, and for investigatory purposes, we'll have a detective who might comb through that information and locate vehicle information, and then, and they will pull that out, and then that changes things. Now that data becomes subject to our retention policy, and also, too, if it becomes part of that investigative packet, then it stays with the case until it's adjudicated. So other than that, as the administrator, I kind of, I'm required by law to conduct periodic audits, which I'll do, and also, too, train our folks and make sure that, make sure that how we're utilizing this program is, aligns with current law and best practice.
Okay. Y'all just keep setting me up for my next questions. You mentioned the cloud. Who pays if it gets hacked? I actually tried to find that answer, and I couldn't. Who's responsible for that? I know a lot of, like, ADT, they told me that, I didn't go with them, by the way, but they told me that if someone broke into my spot, but like a wayward, undisciplined child was the one that broke my camera, they were not responsible. So, and I did, I looked for the answer, but who is financially culpable if their cloud system gets hacked, and then all of this information just...
That's a great question. And I am going to ask Jesse Munn from Flock Public Safety, if you can comment to that, sir?
Didn't know you were going to have to come to the microphone, did you?
I'm sorry to do this all the time. Thank you for having me. My name is Jesse Munn. I'm the Southern California Territory Manager for Flock. So when it comes to this technology, where Flock really stands apart is in the privacy. There is no personally identifiable information that touches our cloud at any point ever. So even if someone were to hack our system, which it is, fits 240 encrypted, both in transit and at rest, there is no public IP address. So the likelihood of that happening is next to zero. You never say zero, but ultimately, there is no identifiable information in the system. So anyone could go stand on the road and capture license plates at a time and a location with a color, but there is no name, address, phone number, there's no additional information in the system at all.
So it's just license plate and make, model?
That's it. So you could stand out there and go look and get the same information that's in Flock. There is a clause in our contract that does refer to that as well, though, so...
It was really long, I tried to read it, I promise. Okay, I'm done.
Are you good?
I'm good.
If I could just add one thing to follow up on the question, we've also negotiated a fairly standard indemnity provision that would protect the city against any sort of negligent acts or omissions on behalf of the vendor that would result in third-party claims, so we are protected in that sense, as well as requiring insurance coverage.
Okay.
Appreciate you, Mike.
Any other questions or comments? And I have a motion from somebody.
Motion.
There we go.
Second.
All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Item B, temporary use permit fee waiver for use of shipping container to serve as a church food pantry. Ron, I believe this is your item.
Correct. Thank you. We had some speakers tonight, but there's a request for a temporary use permit for a fee waiver for the Congressional Church. It was submitted by Ms. Barbara Farrell. So I'd like to point out that it's not about the use of what the permit, the temporary use permit is for, it's about the shipping container, right? So they're requesting that the shipping container be placed in a parking, in their parking lot over there. And so according to our code, that is not allowed, because as you know, that we have some parking issues here, and every time you put a house, or a commercial, or a medical building, there are some parking requirements there. So they're requesting to put this shipping container in their parking lot, and that's what the temporary use permit is for. Again, it's not for the use, it's for the shipping container in their parking lot. So the temporary use permit is for a one-year permit. It is, again, $926, and it has been assessed, as the speaker stated today, they have paid for it, but they're asking for reimbursement of that $926. And again, this is being brought forth for council, and I'm here to answer any questions, but that concludes the report.
Ron, just as a point of clarification, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this issue. The permit itself... this issue. The permit itself has been approved, correct?
The permit has been approved, correct.
And so the question, as a matter of policy, the council considers all way feebers. That is not a decision that we make at the staff level, which is why it's being brought to you tonight.
Okay. Bring it back here, any questions? Questions? Okay, so I'll throw in my two cents. You know, we've always prided ourselves as a city to work very closely with our nonprofits in helping our local folks the best way that they can. And $927, although it doesn't seem like much to a lot of people, that's a lot of diapers and formulas, and a lot of just stress relief to give these families, some groceries. I think it's much better spent at the grassroots level, and the fact that the church went and did all the hard work, did all the legwork, and are simply asking for a fee waiver to help some of our local people, I don't think is out of our realm of possibility, considering what we've done with so many other nonprofits. So I am absolutely in support of this. Thank you very much for doing this, and I'll open it up. With that, I'll go ahead and move this item to waive the $926 permit fee.
Second.
I'll second. I'll just say I'm sad that y'all thought it would take three or four of you to come and say the same exact thing. Y'all could've sent the letter.
Oh, Barbara hasn't been here for a while. She likes coming in here.
Well, I expect Mrs. Farrell, but...
Yeah. All right, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Continue your good work. All right, and I think that's it. I would like to close, well, first of all, I would like to congratulate Justin Wong, Los Alamos class of 2010 volleyball player, and Rachel Fetal, class of 2012 Los Alamos water polo player. Both have come away with gold medals. Rachel being her second gold medal at the ripe old age of 26, so that's amazing. And then I also, on a much more somber note, I want to close in memory of Michael Sly, wife of Kathy, or husband of Kathy Sly. He passed away suddenly on August 12th of a massive heart attack. They live in our Green Brook neighborhood, and Kathy has served for a number of years on the Personal Appeals Commission. So our thoughts and prayers do go out to that family and with Kathy. And with that, I'll go ahead, yes, I'm sorry.
Just, and I don't mean to affect the, they're one of our neighbors, and I know the fam, we know the family quite well, and sorry for them. Just something for us to think about. And I'd mentioned this to the city manager, you know, we had not only one person, but literally the water polo, US Women's Water Polo Team is still located at the Joint Forces Training Base. They won, I think that's the third enrolled gold medal that they won. So I'm hoping we could do something, you know, in their honor. And then the thing I'd like to mention and have us think about, is you know, people, if you've been over there, and I'm over there about every two days, I pay my $5 and I go for a swim. And I could just tell you, the, I remember when we, I happened to be mayor at the time, and we put together a coalition of the state, the county, the local cities, our legislators, all were involved in this, and we were able to bring that pool back from basically a polywog swamp, which what it was, that was a state, it was totally useless. I'm just sad to see, when I'm over there now, how much it has deteriorated. And I do think we ought to be thinking about, you know, some kind of support for a municipal pool in Los Alamos. So it doesn't have to be that one, but certainly that's one to consider. Maybe we could partner and utilize at some point for families and lap swim for seniors, that kind of thing. The pool, the new pool at the high school, I don't know if that's a possibility. I guess my point would be, Mayor Protem...
Let's think outside the box.
Yeah, that we need to start thinking a little bit about this, because I'm worried that, one, we're gonna lose the US Women's National Water Polo Team, but not only that, is that that pool is deteriorating rather quickly, and we need to think about it.
Thank you, point taken. Okay, with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. And can somebody communicate to the mayor that we finished at 7:20, shorter than any of his meetings?
Of course.
And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.